All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I am Mayor Barry Ekin. I'd like to welcome you tonight to our March Board Meeting of the Mayor and Alderman. It's always great to see how your town government works. I know everybody's schedule is very important and we understand your time, you're taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here. We want to be respectful of that. When you came in the board tonight, there were two sheets. I have one of them, but there is a kind of an attendance sheet just to mark that you're here tonight. It's got a place where you can put your name, your address. If we need to get back in touch with you for some reason. There's also a public comment sheet and if you have something to address the board, you need to be sure you're on that public comment sheet. And when we come to that part of our agenda, I will call your name as you come up to this podium. Give us your address and we'll give you two minutes to state whatever you want to talk to the board about. After that two minutes and the public comment period is over, that will be the only time that you'll be able to address the board. Of course, you're welcome to stay to the rest of the agenda as we carry on the town's business. So as we do with all of our meetings, we're going to open up with a word of prayer. And I'm going to ask Pastor Ken Van Kampen to come up to the podium after, hold on. After Pastor Van Kampen, we also do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So at this time, if you wish to participate, we'd ask you to stand. And Pastor Ken.
Let's join in prayer together. Father, we are grateful on this beautiful evening to be able to gather here together as citizens of this town and as board members and the mayor, able to be together. We thank you for your care for us in every way. It was evidenced in the beautiful day that you gave to us with healthy bodies that here are able to be present and with freedom to be able to elect these to office. I pray that as they interact together, as they may debate and question, that you would grant to them wisdom and that in humility before you, as they vote, that you would accomplish the purposes that you have set forth. We are especially grateful to be able to celebrate the past service of Alderman Feldmayer. And Lord, we are grateful to be able to celebrate the service of 15 years of Debbie Pickard here tonight and ask your abundant blessings to be upon her in her retirement. We ask all this in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Tuesday, March 11th. I have the time at 7:03 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would ask our town recorder to give us a roll call. Ms. Richard.
Mayor Ekin.
Here.
Alderman Giannini.
Here ma'am.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Harper.
Here.
Alderman Deechy.
Here.
Alderman Lightsey.
Here.
And Alderman Puzazak.
All right. We do have a form to conduct the town's business. Alderman Poole is absent with an excuse absence tonight. We come into item three on our agenda and that is our public comment time. And I do have a first person on our list, Mr. Brett Pickard. Mr. Brett, come up to the podium, please sir.
How y'all doing tonight?
Sure addressed, Mr. Brett.
165 Atkinson Circle.
Yes, sir.
Back September, October, I attended a meeting and inquired about taking the low left turn down at Kimbrel and Main. I was told there was going to be a study done. I just wondered what the status of that study is.
All right, Mr. Brett. I would look to town staff on that. Mr. Mayor, if I recall, we did a study that was on the advice of the attorney that we leave it up. Is that right?
I think I think I think so. I suggested that we're going to make a change that you have a study done in order to be able to rely on the results of whatever was done for liability purposes.
And I believe my thoughts at the moment where I didn't want to spend the money on a study, knowing the roundabout was coming, that would be kind of a waste of taxpayer funds and let the roundabout come in to see how that's going to affect traffic.
So we're not going to do a study?
At least not till the roundabout, Mr. Brett.
When is that?
Seems like when I'm here.
When is that?
I believe it's going to be, we're going to get second quarter of this year, second or third quarter of this year. It's going to be this year.
Wasn't the study done when it was put up?
When what was put up?
The asylum. Was the study done when the asylum was put up?
I know that the police department is very concerned with if people are stopping to turn and stopping traffic over the bridge and down Atoka, Hattaway. So I know that is a safety concern above kind of number one. If they can do anything to avoid getting backed up more than it is. And I would just echo with Alderman Harper. If we get the, when we get the new roundabout put in and because by now that's the choke point. If we can alleviate, if traffic's going to be moving better, I would even more not want somebody waiting to turn left that's going to now choke that traffic club. My personal opinion.
So when the traffic gets three ways stopped, backed up, plum across the bridge.
You talking about Mead Lake and Atoka?
No, no. Main Street.
Okay.
And traffic back plum across the bridge, why should somebody not be able to turn left? It eliminates traffic.
That's a good opinion, Mr. Brett.
Have you ever watched the traffic?
Oh yeah, I've been in that traffic, yes sir. And I've also been sitting when somebody was waiting to turn left. And especially if they're not supposed to be right now, I do not like that.
But y'all won't do a study, but y'all spent thousands of dollars.
I don't think anybody's saying we're not. We're saying let's wait until the second roundabout goes in and attack it from there. That's when I'm here, Mr. Brett.
Spend all that money to redesign the logos that never changed and won't do that. Y'all have a good night.
Yes, sir. All right, second up is Mr. Kevin Keen. Mr. Keen, come to the podium, sir. Give us your address, please.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman. I'm calling about this. This is what came out of my tab earlier today.
What's your address, Mr. Keen? Your address, your street.
Oh, 570 Williamsburg Drive. I'm calling about this. This is what came out of my tab earlier today. Not upset about that. I called my neighbors, several of them, to see if they had the same problem. Ended up that one of them at least did. And the one that didn't, I called back and I said, well, I found out what was happening, that they flushed hydrants and they just didn't post it. Anyway, that's not even what upset me. But what upset me was the rude behavior and the attitude I took from a young lady by name Crystal when I called to ask if there's, if they were flushing the lines. I won't get into it, but rudeness is rudeness, Mr. Mayor. When I called my friend back to tell him about this before I even got out the person's name, they said, was it Crystal? And I said, well, yeah, how did you know that? Because we've had upsetting conversations with her too. Mr. Mayor, I don't care what the situation is. If people are not happy here, let them find another job. But snapping at citizens for calling and asking a question like that is, it's not right. By the way, did you read all the comments about the water bills? That same person was mentioned in that. And all those comments strangely have disappeared.
Mr. Keen, I can tell you, we always strive for excellent customer service and I do apologize on behalf of the town if you felt that you did not get anything but excellent customer service. We do have policies and procedures, we'll look into it.
It's already in play. I came down and complained and I FOIA requested a file and we'll be following up on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Keen is the last person on our public comment period tonight. So we will go to item number four on your agenda this evening and that is the consent agenda. As it says on the agenda, it says, "All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will generally be enacted by one motion. Except for any items that are removed from the consent agenda, there will be no separate discussion of these items at this time." And I read that because I always want to be mindful that the citizens understand that the board and myself have had plenty of time to look over each and every item in this agenda. And even though we're not debating each one as a separate item, it gets no less attention from this board. So that being said, I would entertain a motion concerning the consent agenda for this evening. A motion from Alderman Schaefer. Go have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Harper. Any minor discussion? Anything, anything needs to be pulled out or anything? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of accepting items in consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? We put that in record. Item five, old business tonight. We have an ordinance, this is our final consideration of amending our fiscal year 25 general fund budget. Exhibit aye in your packet. It's also up on the screens for you. And Mr. Minister.
Yes, sir. Good evening. So the ordinance before you is for final consideration and it would amend the fiscal year 25 budget as it relates to the donation line. So we originally adopted a $7,000 donation total expense line and the amendment would approve the allocation of $9,650. Reason for that is the original budget did not include the last donation request, which was not budgeted, it came in after the budget approval.
And who was that to?
I believe it was Boys and Girls Club, Row or Hatchet, I think.
As this is the second consideration of the ordinance, is there any objection to reading the ordinance by title only? Hearing none. Will the town recorder please read the ordinance by title?
In ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, amending section one of ordinance number 24-06-03 related to approved expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance for final passage?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve Alderman Harper. Do I have a second? I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any other discussion about this? Hearing none. This is an ordinance, we'll take a roll call vote and we'll start at my left. Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Giannini.
Yes.
Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Deechy.
Yes.
I'm having a breakdown. Alderman Jeremy's, but I want to say Alderman Lightsey. Say yes.
Yes.
All right. So any opposed? I didn't hear any. There we go. Ordinance passes on final consideration. Next one, exhibit J in your packet. We have another ordinance for final considerations. Concerns amending the regular monthly start meeting time of this meeting that we're all here tonight for. Since this is the second consideration of the ordinance, is there any objection to reading the ordinance by title only? Hearing none, Mr. Town Recorder, I want you to please read the ordinance by title.
In ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, amending section 1-101 of the municipal code to change the time of regular monthly meetings of the board of mayor and Alderman.
All right. Does anybody want to amend the motion? Change the start time of 6:30? I tried. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance for final passage?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Alderman Deechy. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Lightsey. Any further discussion?
Well, I will bring it up. We had a discussion about 06, but there was a reason. Is there a reason why?
Grass fire.
My thinking is we had all sorts of work sessions and start sessions. Those seem to not affect anybody's, those seem to work well.
Do you want to judge your winner?
In the conversation, I remember we had, that was the last thing. Citizens being getting from work, trying to agree. I can accept this, but. We did get some feedback from the citizens that they might be a stretch.
Okay. Well, we do have a motion and we do have a second. So hearing no further discussion from the board, we'll start down to Alderman Lightsey. What say you?
Yes.
Alderman Deechy.
Yes.
Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Giannini.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. And that passes on final consideration. So we will, of course, all the advertising venues that we normally do for our meetings, but the April meeting of the Mayor and Alderman will start at 6:30 instead of 7:00. All right, we come to section six, which is a new business of our agenda tonight. And we've got some awards and recognitions. Okay. I'll ask former Alderman Daniel Feldmayer. You want Stacy to come up? Makes you look better. Daniel.
Yes, sir. 19 years, no one told me Daniel. That was when you were married.
Okay, all right. So tell me, Dorothy, where you at?
I'm right here.
All right, am I going to read this?
Yes, go ahead and read that, that'd be great.
Okay. So we're going to do several things. For those of y'all that are not familiar, how many years?
19.
Danny was an Alderman with the town of Atoka for 19 years. He had an opportunity to be up in another direction where he couldn't be an Alderman. So he resigned and we have waited and waited. And now it is an awesome time we get to recognize Danny for his accomplishments. So what I'm going to do is read this. We've also got a plaque and we're going to take pictures and stuff. So Danny, Alderman Danny Feldmayer. In recognition of your years of support and tireless dedication as an Alderman and your steadfast commitment to the betterment of our town, particularly within the park and recreation department, we are honored to announce that we will be dedicating a softball field in your name. It's a big deal. Your advocacy for accessible and well-maintained recreational spaces has provided our community with places where families, friends, and neighbors can come together to enjoy sports, leisure, and camaraderie. Yep. Your efforts have greatly enhanced the quality of life in Atoka and for that, we are profoundly grateful. To commemorate this special dedication, we will be placing a plaque on one of the softball fields. I think Danny can even choose which one so he doesn't get the one which you say, back off some.
The one that I drew this.
Once you choose what you'd like for the plaque to say, we will get it made and placed along with the dedication ceremony, so you're not out of the wood yet, on the date of your choosing. This plaque will serve as a lasting reminder for your invaluable contributions and will be prominently displayed on the field as a symbol of your legacy. This gesture is a small token of our immense gratitude for all that you've done for Atoka. We look forward to celebrating your remarkable contributions with you, Stacy, your family, and the entire community. And we're going to get a picture. I just want to say.
Get the reading.
Oh, get the reading, okay. Presented to Danny Feldmayer, December 2005 to December 2024. Thank you for your 19 years of service, even though you didn't let us get tanks and helicopters. That's the story. We appreciate your dedication of service to the citizens of the town of Atoka, Tennessee. The board of mayor and Alderman hereby recognize Danny Feldmayer for his service as an Alderman. And that is a very good looking, very beautiful. The glory is yours. I want to, just to, because we're going to be recognizing Debbie. I know one, Danny and Brett are the only two board members that hired, that were here when Debbie got hired. So, yeah.
And I want to meet you tonight and make sure she, I meant to see her.
Exactly. All right, thanks Dan. Back to you. Looking at my screen, too. Okay, employee recognition for years of service. And I need to have department heads come up. Whoever's getting recognized. Where else have they gotten? It's all here? Okay. All right. Oh, we're doing Debbie first? Okay, all right. Miss Debbie. We have this very beautiful, as we've already said, Debbie has hit 15 years of service with the town of Atoka. We are truly, truly blessed to have sort of you. So there's that. Am I reading the proclamation yet? No, okay, all right.
I couldn't have done it without the same. And it's been a long journey, some highways, high points, some low points, but.
We're not talking about being married to Brett. So it's from 2009.
2010.
2010.
March 1st, 2010.
Yeah. I was actually sitting out right over there in one of those chairs when she did get awarded the job. I was not an Alderman at that time. I was going to be, I was going to be running for Alderman. But yeah. Well, that's all right. I'm not an Alderman usually, so. All right. Did I say anything? Is that it?
That's it.
That's awesome.
Wing Cropper for that.
You get it, Brett? Chief Rudolph. Huh? They tell me to go in order then.
Chief Rudolph, you'll come up with me, please? In 2020, during COVID, we were able to receive a large grant. And with that money that we got from this grant, we were able to put AEDs in every police car in Atoka. That came to fruition for us not too long ago. And what we're going to do tonight is recognize three officers for an event that took place in February. If Sergeant Daniel, you'll please come up? Officer Carter, will you please come up? Today I had the honor of sitting with a citizen that this call was about, that I'm going to read a commendation letter for. I was able to spend 30 minutes sitting with him and he's beating the odds right now because of the situation that took place. It was a call where it came in as unresponsive, not breathing. And I'm going to read this letter real quick. Chief Rudolph, it is with great pride and admiration that I write this letter of commendation for these three officers of the Atoka Police Department. They displayed extraordinary courage, professionalism, and lifesaving skills on February 13, 2025, when they acted decisively to save the life of a community member in distress. On February 13, 2025, they responded to an unconscious person not breathing. Upon arrival, they found the patient lying on the floor, not breathing, with no pulse. Recognizing the critical nature of the situation, they immediately began performing CPR, applying their training and expertise with exceptional precision. Furthermore, they utilized an automatic external defibrillator, AED, to deliver a lifesaving shock, which actually was two, which successfully restored the victim's pulse. Their quick and decisive actions sustained the victim until paramedics arrived, ensuring they received the advanced medical care necessary for recovery. The swift intervention and the exploratory use of CPR and the AED not only reflect their dedication to protecting and serving the community, but also their commitment to ongoing professional training and preparedness for emergency situations. Their actions are a testament to the values and standards upheld by the Atoka Police Department. It is worth noting that the individual survived and is now on the road to recovery. Thanks to their heroic efforts, their ability to remain calm under pressure and perform critical lifesaving measures with precision exemplifies the very best of law enforcement. On behalf of the Atoka Fire Department and the entire community, I extend my deepest gratitude and commendation to them. Their actions that day not only saved a life, but also demonstrated the profound impact that a dedicated and well-trained officer can have in the most challenging circumstances. They are truly deserving of this commendation and I encourage recognition of their extraordinary actions on February 13, 2025. Also, one of the things that we have in the fire service is a challenge coin. And we have special ones that are called chief coins. And these are only given out in situations like this where it's a lifesaving event that took place. And I'm presenting each one with a chief coin tonight. Thanks, sir. Thank you. And as I stated earlier, I was able to spend 30 minutes with this gentleman today and they wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he's still recovering. But he plans on being at a future board meeting to be able to send his, say his testimony for what the actions that took place that night were. And like I said in my letter, if it wasn't for their fast-acting actions that took place, he wouldn't be with us today. And because of that, I thank you because you did exactly what you were trained to do and you saved a life and you can't put a price on that. And we thank you a lot.
Chief Rudolph, you got anything?
Just going to say that each one of these officers, I'm very proud of them. We will be holding an award ceremony at a later date, but I think it's worth noting that when they get recognized outside of the scope, from within, that means just a little bit more, especially when it's coming from the fire department. So I'm very proud.
So I'm very proud of each one of these officers standing before you and all of my officers for that fact. We have several awards. Once these start going through our committee and process, you'll see and hear a lot of the good that's coming out of Atoka. And this is just one example of several situations where they've saved lives. So I'm very proud of all of them.
Thank you.
The first one, for those of you that may not be aware, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we always partner at the Carl Perkins Center, and we like to read. And, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to educate, and we're trying to promote awareness of just some of the things that, you know, hey, if nothing else you can leave here and you can say, I didn't know April was Child Abuse Prevention Month. But I'm going to read this. Says, whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes life's paths for nearly four million of our nation's children annually. And whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socio-economic, or geographic boundaries and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. And whereas the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse is participating in national child abuse prevention efforts through their awareness campaign with a "there's no place like a safe home" theme. Now therefore, I Barry L. Aiken, Mayor of the Town of Atoka, hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and twenty five shall be observed as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Atoka, and urge all citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, respond to this grievous problem, as the center helps to strengthen families and prevent abuse. Now we further commend the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support of their successful efforts. And it's got my hand and my signature on that. Do we have somebody here? That's what I thought. Come on up. You're going to, you've got the floor, so.
So I just want to say thank you. I'm Kayla Starman. I'm the Director of the Carl Perkins Center. We're located in Covington. So I just want to say thank you to the Town of Atoka for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and declaring it as such. Everybody has a responsibility when it comes to child abuse prevention and intervention. And I truly believe that Atoka carries that responsibility well with a lot of integrity. You all support us financially. You all are very eager to answer any questions or help us in any ways. Your police department is phenomenal. Chief Rudolph, our investigators that we work with are Dan Jacob, sorry, and Amanda Swain. I couldn't ask for better investigators to work those cases with us. They're in our center on a regular basis. So I'm just thankful for Atoka and what you all do. Last year, I should have, I should have looked at our numbers for Atoka, and I didn't think about it. But last year, for Tipton County, just severe cases, we served a hundred and eighty kids. It was a hundred and eighty-two, just last fiscal year, just severe cases, just in Tipton County. So I think a lot of times we think child abuse doesn't happen, or it happens everywhere but here, right? But that's just simply not the fact. And I would love to be without a job, but unfortunately, I'm not. And so just really thank you and be looking out for us in April, because we do have a lot of pushes that we do in April. Obviously, it's our job every day of the year, but in April, we try to take it a little bit to the next step. So thank you so much.
Can you get a picture?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Debbie Pickard to come back up and for the board to join me and up here. Just line across there. And I will say a disclaimer. Debbie said many, many, many times, it's not necessary, you don't have to do this. But we totally disagree with that. All right. This is a proclamation. Whereas Debbie Pickard has dedicated fifteen years of exemplary service to the Town of Atoka, significantly contributing to the well-being and development of the Town of Atoka and the Atoka community. And whereas during her fifteen years as Town Recorder, Debbie attended more than two hundred and fifty town meetings while collecting, organizing, and composing just as many agendas, packets, and minutes. You would agree with that, right? And whereas her leadership and dedication have been instrumental, positively impacting her colleagues and our residents alike. And whereas her retirement marks a significant milestone, symbolizing the culmination of a very rewarding career and the beginning of a new chapter filled with opportunities of personal fulfillment. Now therefore, I Barry Aiken, Mayor of the Town of Atoka, along with the Board of Aldermen of Atoka, do hereby express our appreciation and sincere gratitude. I'm getting choked up here. To Debbie Pickard, for her many contributions she has made to the community, this workplace, and I hereby proclaim that March fourteenth, this Friday, shall be observed as Debbie Pickard Day in the Town of Atoka. We didn't do it for Danny. We encourage all citizens to join in expressing their heartfelt appreciation and best wishes to Debbie for her outstanding service and dedication to our town. And this, that day on Debbie Pickard Day here at the Town Hall, we're going to have a reception in her honor from ten o'clock to noon. And we would encourage anybody that wants to come by and give her well wishes and just tell her what, and not by the way. I met yesterday, it was Letitia.
Yes, Wilson.
Yes, yes. And she wanted me to tell you how much, apparently y'all known each other a long time, so. Yeah. And she said, well, you're losing a good one. And I said, yes, I am.
Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate it, and I'm proud to have you and done the job.
Okay. We all get over here.
Or somewhere, because then I just can't see some of y'all.
Tell us how you want us to do it.
In the middle, however, there we go. There we go. Now I can see y'all better. Don't go over Jeremy. All right. Now you're good. I can see everyone's heads.
You what, Brett? All right, ma'am.
I think you're going to be required to take a picture of you, too.
So now she gets a present on her birthday and on her day? Is she present still on her? A present on her birthday and a present on her Friday?
Yes.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Again, the reception for Debbie is going to be this Friday, ten AM to twelve AM. All right. Continuing on, we have Exhibit M in your packet. We have ordinance, and this is a zoning ordinance that has to do with some wall sign regulations. Then ask Mr. Jim, our official town prognosticator, to please expand on what we're talking about, Mr. Jim.
There's such as things as prognosticator? Official?
Oh, yeah. They're not the town plan.
Yeah, probably not. Probably not. Good evening, y'all. Good to see you. So at the planning commission level, recently, last couple of meetings, we've been talking about several different zoning amendments. And these usually come out of things we're seeing at a staff level, people applying for permits, asking about projects and whatnot. And we find out we need to tweak the code in ways. So we're having some pretty good discussions there. When some are ready, we're going to start bringing them forward. And this is one tonight that we're bringing forward because we have an active application in front of the town right now. And we found a possible problem with our code we want to fix. And that has to do with wall signs. So currently, we regulate wall signs in our commercial zoning districts as ten percent of the total wall area. So height times width, total wall area, ten percent, and capped at eighty square feet no matter what, no matter where it is. So you can imagine the problem we have if we have a building that's fairly large. The one that came up recently is the Kroger building. It has over three hundred feet of frontage. Ten percent of that would put it up, you know, a pretty large sign over six hundred square feet. We don't want that. It's capped at eighty square feet. The problem is, an eighty-square-foot sign on a wall that big would look really ridiculous, really small. You've probably seen the one that's on the building now over the front doors that kind of fills that sign band. That's just a little bit under three hundred square feet. And that seems to be in proportion to the building. It makes sense to have it like that. So, and it's far bigger than eighty, of course. So when we started talking about, we thought about ways we could do it, like possibly just eliminate the eighty-foot, eighty-square-foot cap, just leave it at ten percent. But then again, now we're allowing up to like possibly six hundred square feet of signage, which is way too much for even a building that big. So we've shifted a little bit on how we'd regulate wall signage, and that's what's in your ordinance tonight. There's actually three individual changes. They're all identical. And the reason that is, they're in three different sections. One for neighborhood center zoning district, highway corridor zoning district, and industrial zoning district. Same language for all three of those districts. So what it does, it shifts it a little bit, so we're not measuring wall area anymore. And honestly, one of the problems with doing that is, it's hard for us to have the tools to measure wall area and determine what ten percent is or what that is. So it's hard to confirm what an applicant is giving us. This way shifts that a little bit, it's based on linear foot, linear frontage of the building. So say you have a Kroger with three hundred feet of linear frontage, they'd be permitted to have three hundred square feet of signage. So it's a one-to-one ratio. One linear foot equals one square foot. So even the smaller bays, like just say you had a multi-tenant building, had multiple bays, you take the individual bay of that user, say it's a thirty-five-foot-wide Subway sandwich shop, they would get thirty-five square feet of signage for their wall. And that's how it goes. We went back and we reviewed most every sign that exists in the town now. We're not going to be creating a ton of nonconformities. All right? So everything we've seen out there would comply with this new one. One of the fears, of course, you adopt the new regulation, what happens to all the existing signs? Do they get put out of compliance, nonconforming? We would not have that in this case by doing this. So we believe this is a more common way to measure it, an easier way to measure it, a more fair way. And I think we're going to get better proportional signs if we do it like this. So that's what's in front of you here, simply changing the way we're doing it, instead of the ten percent and eighty-square-foot cap. Any questions on that?
And this is just on the front? Or, I mean, we have some buildings with signs on the side as well.
Yeah, so the way it reads, one square foot of signs per linear foot of building wall or lease space on which the sign is erected. So typically, if, like, keep on using Kroger, they have multiple front, they have that side screen, they have signage on that side. So that wall would get the same, get the same formula. So let's say that one's a hundred feet long, they'd get a hundred square foot of signage on that wall. And that's total signage for the wall. Yeah. So you might have a Kroger sign, might say pharmacy over here, might say Little Clinic, all that has to stay under that provision.
Alderman Harper and myself both sit on the planning commission. Alderman Harper as the board's representative, and myself, because the mayor can either sit on things or appoint somebody, and I like to stay active. So there was a lot of discussion, I think you agree, about this. We feel this is a good, a good ordinance for the town, and this does come from the planning commission with the recommendation. So as this is, let's get the official stuff out of the way first. So as this is the first reading of the ordinance, do you have any objection reading about Title Omen? Here, none. Mr. Corr, could you read the ordinance title, please?
An ordinance to amend Title fourteen, Chapter two, Section two oh one of the Atoka Municipal Code related to the zoning ordinance at Atoka, Tennessee.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? And this is first reading.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Alderman Jeanine. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Leinske. Any further, any other discussion?
Do we need, I'm sorry, do we need any verging this to exclusively exclude anybody with a sign prior to this adoption that is excluded?
We wouldn't need to, because we have grandfathered clauses elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, and that would apply to signage. So, and it would be treated as a grandfathered case throughout. Again, we couldn't find any that would need to be grandfathered. In the case it suddenly would be, we'd have other provisions that would cover that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, good question.
Any discussion about making it a little bit larger for our highway district? I know that gets complicated with two oh six.
Yeah. I think we did discuss it a little bit, because we could make it more intricate, right? More detailed. And sometimes it's even, either along a highway, maybe you go to like a one-point-five square foot per one linear foot, or one-point-two-five or something. I've also seen it before where it's based on distance from the right of way. So let's say you have like the Kroger center, you might have an outlaw or two up in front, they would have a one-to-one. But if you're back a certain distance, like, you know, more than a hundred feet back off the roadway, then it jumps to a one-point-two-five or one-point-five ratio to allow a little bit more signage. We didn't go that far, because even, you know, looking at the Kroger example, this actually fitted almost exactly from what they're asking for to what this ratio was. So we didn't go that far. But it's a possibility, and it's fairly common to do it that way.
And Jim, they can always go to the BCA, correct, if they want to go more?
They could.
Yeah.
Ideally, and usually the variance, probably what you're talking about, is if there's some sort of hardship or something, I'm not sure what that'd be. Maybe it is distance from the roadway, if someone's put really far back, allow them to go a little bit larger than what's provided. You know, ideally, we'd have it built into our code, so you wouldn't need that. Again, we didn't necessarily find the need based on what we've seen out there so far, but we could discuss it and consider it, for sure. And again, that's not uncommon to have those kind of provisions.
Any other discussion?
Do windows count as walls?
Yes. Yep.
See a lot of window signs.
Yep. And we actually don't address window signs separately. A lot of folks do have a separate provision for window signs.
But that counts as the.
I would say it does. In my mind, it's a sign that's visible from the, from outside the building.
Good question. All right. No further discussion. This is the ordinance on this first reading. We're going to do a roll call vote. And so we'll start with Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Deach.
Yes.
Alderman Jeanine.
Yes.
Alvin Chek.
Yes.
Alderman Leinske.
Yes.
Motion does pass, ordinance pass on first.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. We have a resolution. Exhibit N in your packet has to do with employee benefits. The Board of Aldermen had a work session concerning this, and really got into the details and the questions were asked and answered.
So what you have before you is a resolution that would effectively change the health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, accidental, short-term disability, long-term disability. We've identified some savings in shifting from the state insurance plan and moving to one that is a brokered plan. We discussed this at our work session during the budget discussion, I believe it was last week. We anticipate an April first, two thousand twenty-five start date, as you see in the, in the resolution, with the savings provided with, on the insurance. We will provide additional benefits to the employee in the form of increasing the life insurance from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. We would provide short and long-term disability insurance at no cost to the employee. And we would also increase the flexible savings account contributions. Those are all laid out in those particular sections. We'll provide a Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO plan, high deductible plan, dental vision plans. We've also identified and kind of memorialized in this resolution, the employee cost share for the health insurance at fifteen percent of the monthly premium. If you have to answer any other questions that you may have. One thing I did want to draw your attention to on Section four, is that we're, we're also gonna be adjusting the FSA plan, so it has a rollover. You can start that April first of this year, and that would allow, I believe, up to about six-hundred-and-sixty dollars of rollover that the employee contributes to. Roll that over to the next calendar year. You'll see that in Section four, Part one, effective April first, FSA will provide a rollover provision from year to year. So what that means is our current FSA plan has already started, started back in January. We're not gonna change it this year, except for the rollover provision, that's a relatively simple change. But then effective next January, two thousand twenty-six, then we will match the employees' contributions accordingly, as you see laid out in the resolution. If you have to answer any questions that the board has.
I just wanna inform the citizens, you might have been hearing Administrator going over how it is a win for our town employees. We wanted to make sure we started this process, that they still have great coverage, and we were able to add some benefits. And for you, the citizens, the most important thing you should remember is, not only are we doing that for them, we are saving the town a very significant amount of money by doing this, north of two-hundred thousand dollars. So we are very mindful of our citizens' money, investment in the town, and we think this is a win-win for both the employees of the town and citizens of the town.
About two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, Mayor, savings.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. I always never know quite about a resolution, but I'm gonna ask the Town Administrator, do you agree to the resolution by Title Omen, please? And no objection. No objection. Go ahead.
A resolution approving and accepting Clay and Lane Insurance for Brokerage Services for Health, Dental, and Vision Benefits, and approving MetLife as the town's provider for life and accidental death and dismemberment, short-term disability and long-term disability insurance.
Thank you, ma'am. As this is a resolution, we don't have to do a roll call vote, so do I have a motion to approve this resolution to state?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Harper, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Chek. Any other comments, discussions?
I just wanna thank staff on your hard work and dedication, really spent a lot of time getting to the details. I'm not saying that some work sessions aren't worth my time, but this one definitely was. And as the mayor mentioned, I think it is a win-win for the citizens, for the employees, and for the town.
Thank you. All right. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? No further discussion. All in favor of approving the resolution to state, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes. Given miscellaneous items from the mayor, the Board of Alderman, and the Town Administrator, I have one thing for the board, just as a matter of information. We are coming upon the renewal of our Town Administrator contract. I have been, we've already started the process based on precedent, not only that I was involved, Brian Quarrel, the mayor, and the attorney working together, Marcus Hired, Mayor Walker, and Casey. So we are, Amber and I are working on the renewal contract for the Town Administrator. We hope to, within a matter of a couple of weeks, we're gonna be putting out a special call meeting for the board to look at all the details and make their recommendations. So, anything you'd come to add to that?
The only other suggestion, Alderman Bank, Mayor, is that I think we are optimistically close to finalizing the wastewater, the Munford-Brighton and Atoka wastewater agreement. And so we may want to build in, if we're gonna do a special call meeting, we could handle both issues. But I will know tomorrow, I meet with the attorneys for Brighton and Munford tomorrow. And Brighton has now got its new mayor and Board of Alderman installed, and they are up to speed with their counsel on the percentage and the cost and the exposure for the overage under the current contract. And they also have accepted probably ninety-eight percent of the new proposed contract. So that's a quick update there.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I do have one other thing. The Town Administrator, Alderman Deechy and myself, attended the Tennessee Municipal League Legislative Conference, and representing Atoka. Right now, you may or may not be aware, the Tennessee State is in session, the legislatures are in session, and they have a lot of bills, some of them that we are very excited about, we like, some of them we do not like. Not only did we get to talk to other municipalities that were, you know, in our area, even across the state, but we were able to have some time with Senator Rose and Representative Moody, and express to them our concerns on some of the bills that they have coming up before them. And I think it was a very productive and good thing you had. Anything to add?
It was a great education, and an opportunity to talk to Representative Moody and Senator Rose. I think that was a good presentation.
And that's all I have. Is there anything else from the board? Mr. Administrator?
Just one brief announcement, the approval of the health insurance, so we will have a communication going out to employees first thing tomorrow. We have employee meetings scheduled for the thirteenth and fourteenth, that we'll push that information out. We'll have a third if we need to, but we encourage all of the employees to attend those informational meetings.
And their families.
And their families and spouses. And we'll have those representatives from Klan and the broker to answer it, Blue Cross to answer any questions that they might have. Get into some of the specifics, 'cause everybody's situation is, is unique to their, to their own situation, and get those questions answered. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Chairman, are you taking the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.